So without further ado, I'd like to invite Mayor Ryan.
Thank you, everybody. And we're here this evening to provide the village residents, some village residents, an important update concerning the status of our water supply. Now recently, the residents and businesses in our community received the 2018 annual water quality report in the mail. This document is produced and distributed by our village water department. We appreciate their effort. And it's done each year, so they give detailed information and meet the state and federal requirements pursuant to that. And for those who would like an extra copy, they're available on the side. You can also go on the website, in Spanish and English. Tonight, the Deputy Mayor Charles Raffo, trustee Jeffrey Daniels, who are assigned to the water department, will be speaking. We also have trustee Lamont Johnson, trustee Rayland Hobbs will also be at the mic if they so choose. They'll discuss the continuing regional water conservation alert throughout the village. Other topics will be covered, water conservation status, capital projects, some underway, some planned, lead, copper testing, and more. Just want to mention a couple of quick things when it comes to water conservation. Of course, it's important to practice using our water efficiently. You want to stop all your leaks. Sometimes your underground lawn sprinkler, if you're so blessed, is one of the problems. Sometimes it's the toilet, whatever. If you stop the leak, you'll see that the bills will go down a bit. Watering your lawn and gardens makes sense, but do it on the odd evening days you're assigned. And please do not water when it's raining. No running hoses, if you're going to have to clean your sidewalk or your driveway, you should use a broom. And the hoses, if you do have a running hose, should be able to shut off. Running forces are always a concern. And washing, try to restrict the showers to, say, 10 minutes or so. No, that's not always easy. In the kitchen and in the laundry room, have full loads when you use it, so that we maximize the use of the water. So with those tips and other things that'll follow, I would like now, without further ado, please welcome our Deputy Mayor Charles Raffo to the mic. And he'll take over the emcee responsibility for the evening. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. It is so nice to see all of you here this evening. Mayor Ryan, me and Co. with some of my talking points. But first, I want to know, we have trustee Lamont Johnson here with us this evening. He might want to share a word with you. And we also have trustee Hobbs. So trustee Johnson?
We appreciate the residents that came out. Water is something that we take for granted. It's places like Flint, Michigan, where they don't enjoy clean drinking water. So we're doing everything possible in Hempstead to make sure the water that you drink, the water that you bathe with, is good water. Like I said, water, even though it's everywhere, we have to appreciate our water and use it correctly. Thank you.
Good evening, residents. I'm practicing water conservation. And again, we hope that this information served the residents well. Thank you for coming.
I want to thank both of the trustees for coming up. If you see that sign where it says Hempstead Saving Water Together. It is important that we understand what we mean when we talk about saving water. Our mayor pointed out a couple of points where I think it's really important when you have leaking faucet, particularly when your toilet is running. We've had several residents in the Villas de Col where their water has gone up from $50 or $75 a month, in a period, up to $300, $400, $500. They're wondering why. They're telling us that, "Well, you know, I'm not using any more water. I'm trying to figure out why my water bill is so high." So when the guys go over and check, they find out that they have these leaking toilets. And it is a true saying that your toilet is used more water in your house than anything else. So you have to make sure that you're very careful that your toilet is not running and leaking if you want to save yourself some money on water. If you recall, our last meeting last year in May, that we implemented a water conservation program that turned out to be very, very helpful. The residents did take heed to that. Our water through the summer, our usage was a little up. In 2018, I believe we used, I believe, about 10 million gallons a day, which went down from 10 million to 8 and then 6.5. So we're looking at the way that we use water, and it is important. Because I heard trustee Johnson say, "You never know," and the sun says, "You never miss your water until your well runs dry." So when there is no water, we understand how important it is, because there's nothing can do without water. So we are hoping that this presentation this evening will certainly help all of us get on the same track when it comes to reserving water and helping each other, okay? All right. A lot happened last year. We had new treatment system entering construction on Laurel Avenue with the plants over there and with the towers over there. Son was one of the people that called me about the running water over there. And you might wonder why that water was running, and I believe it's still running.
Still running.
It's still running. We're in the process of starting construction over there, putting in new chosen towers over there, so that we might be able to control that. And also to make certain that no matter what part of Hempstead that you're in, that you will have safe water. A couple of other things that I want to point out about Laurel Avenue. Is that the screen over there?
That's the site.
That's the site plan.
You want to see the channel?
Yes, I do.
These easels are blocking all view.
Oh, okay. You see the two on your right? When people ask why is water pressure is high sometimes and low the other times? When the towers are filled up with water, the water pressure is high. When the towers are down like that, like the one on your right is, the water pressure is low. You might ask, "Why is that?" Most of the time, it comes when we have fires in the village, or something, and hydrants are open or something, the water pressure goes down. So I've had several of those questions in that area over there. They thought it came from that the water that's constantly running down the drain, but that wasn't it. So as long as you're understanding that preserving water is still important, no matter where we do that in Hempstead. At this point, I'm going to turn this portion over to Jeff Daniels, and I'll come back with you in a couple of minutes after he's finished.
So just to give you a little background again about the water system, how it works. We have two water plants. One located on Clinton, the other located on Laurel. There's three different departments that cooperate, coordinate amongst themselves to help both pump the water, treat the water, and then deliver the water. There's a total of seven operators that maintain the pumps and controls and monitor the, monitor and build the treatment chemical tanks and sample the water to ensure quality across those two individual wells. We're currently in the process of doing a test well back here at Kennedy Park, for another source of water. We're also contemplating maybe doing another test well over by the Rafford courts at Hempstead High School. And the rationale there is that New York State Department of Environmental Conservation has been limiting the number of wells municipalities can drill. And so thinking ahead and being proactive, we actually went out to try to make sure that we ensure continuity in our water supply by drilling those test wells and getting permission to drill those test wells ahead of the EDC, New York State EDC, limiting the number of wells that a municipality can actually drill. So that was us being proactive in that. So just a little bit of stats. The water system is considered large by EPA standards because of the sheer number of village residents that we have here, 55,000. Estimating, we all could probably say that it's way more than that. Hopefully find out more about exactly how many people here in the upcoming census, so that's an important thing that we need to tap into here. There's over 93 miles of water mains within the village of Hempstead. They're ranging size from four inches to 24 inches in diameter. In 2018, we pumped from the ground 1.85 billion gallons of water, over 5 million gallons per day. And that is a monumental task, if you think about it. Our water is below ground here in Nassau County, as opposed to New York City water that's collected in the reservoir. So because the water is underground, we have to deal with contaminants that come from buildings, from manufacturers and the like. And what happens is the contaminants can sink below ground and infiltrate our water system. Because the wells are sometimes 500 to 600 feet below ground, the gravel and the sand actually act as a natural filtration system to kind of weed out some of the toxins that come down here. But as our wells are deep in that 500 foot level and we pump the water up, once it does come up, we actually have to treat it at that point. And those treatment points are what you see both on Laurel Avenue and again over on Clinton Avenue. The Clinton Avenue plant in particular, it's seven wells at Clinton Avenue, and there's two wells at Laurel Avenue. And hopefully over the next few years, we'll have activated another well for most well here at Kennedy or over at Hempstead High School. You may notice that at both of the water plants, we have these tanks. The tanks act, the tanks fill up when the actual demand for the water is at its lowest point. So primarily during the day, not morning time, but during the day when people are out there watering around and they're not using the water, the excess water gets pumped up into the tanks, and it's a storage facility basically for the water. So God forbid, we have a very, very large fire here in the village that can cause the water pressure, because they'd be pumping water out of the hydrants and lower the water pressure here in the village. The tanks act as a failsafe for us. What happens is when the water pressure gets low, they can drop the water from the tanks, and it just pressurizes and run through the system. So we like to keep those tanks, hopefully have another tank wherever the next well that we drill. The tanks today have been, the most modern tanks have been below ground, because a lot of people obviously don't know that 500 foot, dream, how high are they?
185.
About 185 foot tank over their backyards, right? So most people, like most municipalities, have been doing tanks into the ground. That's actually not ideal because of gravity. So when you have to then, you know, pump the water, when you need the water to run those tanks, you actually have to pump the water out of those underground wells, or those low ground wells, versus having the water up in the air, and it can naturally fall down and pressurize itself through the system. So that's one of the reasons I like Hempstead High School as a site, because we could actually put another tank, water tank, above ground water tank over by Hempstead High School, which would make our entire water system run more efficiently and actually reduce the cost to operate the water system as well, too, if you pump it. So we talked a little bit about the contaminants. Obviously, they come down from, come from man-made things, whether it be from buildings, from different building systems, from mechanicals, what have you. We want to talk a little bit about, I know it came up earlier, about what's going on on Laurel Avenue. So as I stated earlier, you have two tanks, I'm sorry, two wells at Laurel Avenue. It's well seven, well nine. I guess it was in late, I guess the summertime of last year, there was a detection of Freon 22. And again, our staff here in the village are constantly testing the water. And when they came up with a little bit of Freon 22 in the water, they immediately stopped running those wells, so that that Freon 22 did not infiltrate throughout the water system. So when we stopped running that wells, that's when we had last year's conservation meeting, because the concern was that we would not have enough water going through the system if we were to have a catastrophic fire in the village. But through working with our host Mark Gray and our staff here, what we created at well seven and nine, we realized that the contamination, the way that the contamination was flowing, that if we actually pumped well seven, it acted as a filter, so no contamination reached pump nine. So what you see over at Laurel Avenue is us constantly running the well at well number seven, and taking that water and then putting it into the stormwater system, so that we can still operate well number nine. So well seven is actually operating as a filtration system, so that the Freon 22 naturally gets pumped out and into the stormwater system. Unfortunately, the stormwater system isn't built to handle that much runoff constantly 24 hours a day. So that's why you see a little bit of pooling going on over on Laurel Avenue, is because we're running that so that we can run well nine. Now, to fix that, we had to go get an airstripper. My favorite. Airstripper is one of these towers that you see here, not the prettiest things in the world, but the airstripper actually removes the Freon 22 from the water. There's an airstripper at the Clinton Avenue plant, but there's no airstripper on the Laurel Avenue plant. So we're installing the airstripper on the Laurel Avenue plant, beginning in Thursday, I think the, the first materials are actually supposed to start on Thursday. So by the end of the summer, we'll be able to, you don't have to run well seven into the ground anymore, because we'll have that water infiltration system, the airstripper in place, to actually filter out Freon 22, and we can move forward with just our normal system as it was before. So you will see another airstripper going up over at Laurel Avenue over the summertime. To pay for that, we had to actually fill the bond to pay for the airstripper, but we actually was able to offset some of the costs, because we actually went out for a grant from New York State, was given a grant from New York State to install the airstripper. So over the next few months, what you'll see is the construction of that over on Laurel And then the last thing that we touched on a little bit was the new 1-4 dioxin that came out. Now, the 1-4 dioxin is something that New York State just came out with, and they haven't, it hasn't been fully restricted off the restricted list. But again, because our staff or our host Mark are, see the writing on the wall in terms of that New York State is moving towards restricting 1-4 dioxin based on a certain amount of parts in the water system, we have to create a system that treats 1-4 dioxin. In other words, it removes it from the water. To do that, then, New York State anticipating that they were going to ban this substance in the water supply, allowed a certain amount of grants to be passed in the budget. And last year, we applied for those grants, and we were granted close to $3 million, so that we could go ahead and design and construct a system. The system is called, let me see, it's called Advanced Oxidation, AOP, Advanced Oxidation Process, that removes the 1-4 dioxin from the water. Unfortunately, the grant doesn't cover 100% of the cost, so we will have to absorb some of the cost here in the village of Hempstead to design and to construct those AOP treatment. But we will do that and have that in place at Laurel Avenue, as well as at Clinton Avenue as well. So that will be happening over the next, call it 24 months or so, as we go through the design process. But both grants have been applied for, and we've been told that we will be able to tap into that grant money. We're also been told that because, you know, we checked some boxes in terms of our demographics here in the village, that we also get, have the opportunity to apply for low-cost financing through New York State to actually lower the cost, the interest rate on bonds that we would have to raise in order to go ahead and do it. So we are proactively working on this in the village here today. And just so you know, there's a couple of others, just one aside. You know, obviously, in order to maintain a system this large, again, it was in terms of EPA, it says this is a large system for the sheer number of residents we have, it takes a certain amount of expertise and training. And we have two great water people with Ralph and Mike, but both are, at some point in time, going to hang it up. So we also have to start making sure that we have the next level of expertise, succession planning, established, that have the criteria and the experience in order to run the plan, particularly the AOP process, which is relatively new for us. You're going to need to have the experience to run it as we go on. So we will, from here, probably have a little bit of overlap in staffing, so you may see a little bit more added cost going forward. But hopefully, with some of the infrastructure work that we're doing, we are also in conservation, which has been working, we'll see a net negative on the bill. So we're working towards that end, and I think that's all I was to cover. That's that was.
I just want to point out a couple of things before we bring Bob up. I hope you're not thinking that this Freon and this 1.4 dioxin, we still see it on Laurel Avenue and Hempstead. This is Jason Wiler, most curious. So whether we do anything now or we do anything later, we hope we're going to have to do something sooner or later. Jeff mentioned the cost. If we don't, if it's not funded and we don't have grants to pay for it, unfortunately, it's on the back, it's on the back of the taxpayers. But we all know our employment is the big supplement we get clean and healthy water, no matter where you are.
Flint, Michigan is a good example why this rule was put in place decades ago. I think it's 30 years now. And the village has participated for 30 years, it's passed before in colors. Your lead, and not so much here, but in certain water systems, copper, doesn't come out of the ground, it comes out of the pipes in your house. Because when the water is a great big pipe, then very little water's in contact with the pipe. When it gets to your house, the pipes get smaller, 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 so there's a lot of surface area. So what happens is if the water is acid, it leaches those metals out of the pipe. So one of the things that we do is we sample a selection of 60 homes throughout the village. EPA is tightening up the rules on this. And we're looking more and more where most homes in the village, you're going to have copper pipe, and if it's done properly and it's done in a modern way, they're going to use a special solder, that's a silver solder, and it doesn't bleach anything into the water. If you had a house that's really old, or you have a plumber who's cheating, they use lead solder. So the way they discovered a lot of these problems were actually people with water filters, where a lot of lead solder got down into the water filter, and kids were being poisoned if they're drinking the water anyway. So what we're looking for, we have no way to know exactly if your home has a copper water service, or in the 1920s, they actually made pipes out of lead. And that's what Flint, Michigan had. A lot of their pipes were very old, and made out of lead. So what we would like to do, if people know they have a lead service line, we want to come and sample your water. If you're not sure, we'd be very happy to come and take a sample of your water, because we're trying to comply with EPA's requirements. They require that we test every lead service line, but we don't have any way to know what's happening, because it's part of your house, and we don't have a record over that. So if you can, if you're interested in getting a sample, we'd love to come and get the sample. You're going to get the results, either way, good, bad, or indifferent. But it would be very helpful to us if we could find anybody with lead service line, or even if you had a copper service line, get lead solder. And if you ask your neighbors about it, too, we have trouble getting people to comply.
So certainly, we have to call them, and there's a number on in the water department. Call there, make an appointment, and we'll take care of it for you. Okay?
Does it matter when your house was built?
Yeah.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, the age, the age of the house will dictate the probability of what kind of pipe we would use. If your house was built in 1920, it doesn't mean you have a lead pipe in the house, but it's much more likely you have a lead pipe in the house than if it was built two years ago.
Right. 1957 is when they actually were doing copper pipes. So how do you build after that? We can just say to people, "Have houses older than 60 years need to be tested." Those are copper pipes.
Well, that's part of it.
Actually, building people, building inspectors about that, but that's a code.
Yep. So that's part of it, but a lot of it comes back to the start.
Okay.
The, you know, I can do a little story. The way that they started with this program, I actually was lucky enough to work with a man who did the research on this. It was in Smithtown, there was a dentist's home, and his daughter got lead poisoned. So this was a new house, there was no lead paint, none of the normal exposure was, the health department was perplexed, they couldn't figure it out. They had copper pipes, it didn't make any sense, and it took them over a year to figure it out. The dentist had a whole house water filter put in. And when the plumber was putting, you know, solder and sweating the joint between copper point, pipe, and the water filter, he didn't do it right. And what you have to do when you're sweating a pipe, you heat the pipe with your torch, and you want the hot pipe to melt the solder. If you don't know what you're doing, they take the torch and they're melting the solder but not getting the pipe hot. So what this guy did is, all this lead solder ran down inside the filter house. So when water sat in there at night, you know, with very little water running for, you know, eight, 10, 12 hours, it was saturated with lead. And this little girl would drink water at night, she'd get up in the middle of the night, fill her cup from the bathroom, so she was getting huge doses of lead. And that was a house with copper pipes. So one of the problems is, the new solder they use is silver solder. It costs a lot more than lead solder, and it's a lot harder. You have to be a better plumber to sweat a joint with. The dioxin, first, there's something called the UCMR, it's the Unregulated Contaminant Monitor Rule. And the village has been participating in this for several decades. And there were three rounds of sampling. They picked, the EPA picks contaminants that they think might be a problem, and then they have water systems all around the company, the country, take samples for those. So I think the dioxin was one of the contaminants that they added on the third round. So we took samples. Mike, do you remember the year of the first sample? Was it 2015?
Put it together.
It was around 2015, the exact date escapes me. And we got one little detection from one of the plants, and not, nothing on the other plant. And we re-sampled, and then there was nothing on either one. So we figured it might be a fluke, because one of the things with the UCMR, there are samples for compounds, but generally speaking, there's no laboratory method approved for them. So one of the problems with the UCMR is that the labs are trying to figure out how to analyze for some of these things, and you get very inconsistent results. And then there was another round in 2017, Mike, 2018? Was that the second one? And then we got a definite detection, re-sampled, and we got another detection. And then we started sampling the individual wells. So it was really, you know, one, two years ago that we knew for sure.
That you knew, but it's possible it was President Walter's system tired enough because the lab didn't have the technology to test it.
That's, that's accurate. We don't know what it's like.
Now, we do have our supervisor, Mike, from our water plant. Come up front, Mike, so people can see, know who they're calling, they're complaining. And to, you know, say thank you.
Yes, sir.
How many known carcinogens in the water now?
Well, see, this is where the UCMR comes in. The ones that... The ones that we know to sample for, you have none after treatment. The ones that we don't know to sample for, you don't know. One of the things I was explaining to one of the gentlemen before the show, there's two kinds of treatment that are very typical in the water industry. And the airstripping tower, aeration is the most common treatment. It actually goes back to Romans and even India before that. People just knew, when you aerated the water, it was good, it was safe, it was healthy. So aeration will take out any compound that's volatile, that... So, aeration will take out any compound that's volatile, that, that wants to come out of the water. There's another treatment, also goes back to the Romans and the Indians, is activated carbon, charcoal. It's really no different than if you have a fish tank filter, that's activated carbon, but the water through the carbon, and that'll get out a lot of the same things that aeration will not do, but it'll also get out a few different things. So, between the aeration, carbon filtration, that was probably ninety-nine percent of the treatment systems in New York State, if not the United States. Now, the, the problem with things like dioxin, which is a very unusual compound, it's very, very stable, it likes to be dissolved in water, so you can't get it out in an air stripper. Let's say if you have something that's dissolved in water, let's say you take salt water, the salt is dissolved in water, you could put that through an air stripper a hundred times, the salt's gonna stay dissolved in the water, it doesn't want to come out. So, the dioxane is that way, it's soluble, it likes to be in the water. Also, it doesn't like to adhere onto the activated carbon, so the number two, the number one, the number two treatment methods that are proven, that are easy and relatively inexpensive, neither will work at all for this. So, this AOP, the Van Doxation Procedure, it's, you take hydrogen peroxide, which is the same stuff that you have in your medicine cabinet, just a lot higher strength, it's H2O2, it's water with extra oxygen stuck on there. And then you have to activate that, and you can use that with UV light in, in some cases, or you can actually add ozone, which is O3, both really strong oxidizers. So, you activate a small percentage, like ten or twelve percent of the H2O2, so that it can break down this, this 1-4 dioxin, because it's really stable, it doesn't want to break down. So, that's why the complexity of the treatment systems, the AOP, is much higher than most of the treatment systems. One of the reasons that trustee was, was talking about, the personnel needs, the staffing needs, a lot of the water things thirty, forty years ago were very simple. My, my father was a water supply engineer, my grandfather was a water supply engineer. My grandfather's day, everything was about bacterial quality. A hundred and, a hundred and twenty years ago, hundreds of thousands of people in the country died every year from waterborne illness from bacteria. That's with a much smaller population, so you can imagine, at today's scale, it'd be three or four or five hundred thousand people a year. Would, you can imagine, if that many people were dying from water, this room would be full. So, they figured out how to get better hygiene on, on well seals, and using chlorine for disinfection. And then in my father's day, things really became more about making the systems more reliable, more cost-effective, and getting quantity of water that you wanted for fire protection for bigger buildings. And then it was, in the nineteen seventies, and Long Island has kind of been at the forefront of a lot of these issues nationwide. Nineteen seventy-seven, in Bethpage, with what they now call the Grumman Dome, there were industrial solids, something called trichloroethylene and tetrachloroethylene. And at that time, the methods were very experimental, and health departments and the state health departments started sampling these water samples, and they were finding these solids. And this is one of the tests that we now run, you know, we're taking samples almost every day for these things. So, at that time, in nineteen seventy-seven, it was very experimental. Now, if you look at the Clinton Street Plant, anybody's heard of past that, it's a very unusual plant, and that has two great big basins, they're, they're over a million gallons a piece, and they have nozzles coming out of it. And with water originally, nineteen thirty-two that was built, the water for each well would be run through these nozzles, and it would aerate and fall into the basin. The idea of that was to add oxygen from here to settle out the oil. So, they were really looking at something that was just an aesthetic problem, but they didn't know that they were way ahead of their time. Any solids that we had prior to the nineteen seventies were already being treated from the nineteen thirties, even though it wasn't built for that reason, nobody knew even to test for it. So, it's, it's a constant game, we're learning to keep up, and as the equipment gets better and the lab, you know, we're finding things. Where now, you know, it used to be parts per million was high science, and then it was parts per billion. Most of the drinking water standards for most compounds now are five parts per billion. And the lab detection limit used to be half a part per billion. Half a part per billion is five hundred parts per trillion. We now have things where the lab is measuring with some reliability, some repeatability, down to ten and twenty parts per trillion. So, you, you get to a certain point where, um, it's going to become almost impossible to get to non-detect. Some of these contaminants are such, at such trace levels, I can tell, when I see the lab results, and this was something that actually happened about thirty years ago, we got some funny-looking lab results from the wells, and there were compounds I'd never seen there before. It was because the guy who took the samples to the lab stopped to put gas in the truck on the way to the lab. The lab bottles, the samples were in sealed bottles, inside a sealed cooler, inside the truck, and stopped for gas, and you can see that in the samples. So, that's how sensitive it used to be, much, much more sensitive now. A lot of the emerging contaminants like 1-4 dioxin, and one of the new things is PFOS, it's polyfluoroalkylated substances. We don't have that here, for goodness. But, my company does a lot of work at Burkheadon Labs, we've done about twenty different groundwater treatment systems out there. And hours of people who are sampling for PFOS out there, you can't use a cooler that's ever had a blue pack in. You know those blue packs, those freezer packs? They have a little PFOS in them. So, if that, if that cooler's ever had a blue pack in that cooler, the sample's gonna be bad. Um, I have a Tyvek, uh, or a Vortex raincoat, that has PFOS on it. I've had that raincoat in my car for ten years, so I can't carry samples in my car. When the people take those samples, they're not allowed to shower with shampoos or detergents the day they're gonna take the samples, in juxtaposition. But, because things, let's say the dioxin, the most common exposure of the dioxin appears to be, it's a slight component in detergents, it's a component in cosmetics, it's a component in lotions. So, even though we've emptied the water, and my personal suspicion, I cannot prove this, is it was also used as a chemical stabilizer of other solids, so the Roosevelt Field Rule, which is what had hit Clinton Street many years ago, and we had the air stripper there for it. The detections at Clinton Street, I suspect that was a, um, used as a chemical stabilizer there. But it's present at very, very, very tiny concentrations that, you know, ten, twenty years ago, even five years ago, we couldn't detect it, we didn't even know it before.
Okay. Want to add anything? Do we have any more questions? Yes, yes, sir.
I was here because I got this in the mail, and, um, every time, well, I did quite a few of the houses where I am, and every time there's like a third alarm fire or whatever in like the middle of the night, the next day, my like drinking water, tap water, and all the water, the house, it's all rusted.
Yeah, that? That happens. What happens in the mains, you have two sources of iron. One comes out of the sand, comes out of the well, it's pumped up with the well, and that we can treat at the plants and remove that. Now, a lot of the water mains, Deputy Mayor had mentioned, there'd be ninety-three and a half miles of water mains. Some of those are cement lined, the newer ones are cement lined. A lot of the older ones were cast iron, and they're unwind cast iron. So, even though we can have water leaving the plant with no iron, it goes into an old water main, and the water main is a little bit rusty. So, when the water's going through there on a normal day, it's going through pretty slowly, and it doesn't pick that up. When you have a fire, everybody's pumping a lot of water, and you're opening the hydrants, so the water starts going really fast, and what it does is it picks up the, the rust that's on bottom of the main and even the sides of it. When we flush the mains, usually in the spring and the fall, we open up the hydrants to get the water to go fast, because you want to pick up any of the solids or grit or sand or anything that might be in there. So, when you have a fire in your neighborhood, what we try to do, and we ask the fire department to do, is to run the water in the hybrid until it's clean. But if, you know, it's very hard to get all of that. So, if you have that kind of a problem, if you could call the water department, Mike, and, you know, we can coordinate with DPW, have them come and try to clear those mains for you.
Is that just what you were talking about before? I took this off the table?
Well, that's a little different, that's the lead and copper sample. So, if you have, you know, water service, we'd be having to test for lead and copper, but the red color of the water after a fire is iron. So, that really won't, you could have perfectly good lead and copper, but still have the iron, or you could have perfectly clear water, but could have lead in it.
You can also use that number, you see your phone number on that card that you have?
Yeah.
You can use that for the water pen also, and they'll be able to...
Yeah, when, of course, you mentioned, the other guy mentioned, that, um...
Oh, I went, I was, I asked the fire department, because in other neighborhoods where I lived
out here, I noticed the fire department, they would open it up, I, I saw them opening it up, like full blast, and the water was like really crystal clear. Like around my way, if you go to open it up, it's gonna like blow out rust.
We, we, the fire department, when we go and call, and even if it's an automatic alarm and it's not a fire, they open up the hydrants just to clear out the hydrants. So, that's a practice the fire department do, to make sure that we clear out the hydrants, even if it's not a fire. So, that, that is a, a procedure that we do.
Trustee, trustee Hodges is a member of the Hempstead Fire Department. Okay? You clear, sir? One more question? Yes, ma'am.
You said that it's possible, you had a theory about that, that the water wall is even stabilized and softened, is that right?
Could you say that? Nine more time.
You, you guys have the source of that, where, you have a theory of that, but is there a way to determine where it's coming from?
Yeah, we, we know, we've been sampling with, with high frequency, individual wells to find out where it's coming into a certain well. And then knowing how the groundwater flows, it's very complicated, we get a general idea of the direction that it's coming from. But one of the things that's unique about Hempstead is you have a very old sewer system. And people always think the sewers, that, oh, they're gonna leak and they leak out, but they don't, sewers that leak, leak in. The groundwater usually goes into the sewer. So, Hempstead has been very protected because it's had sewers for over a hundred years. So, there's certain things, like most of Nassau County has problems, nitrates. Hempstead does, most of our wells, it's not even detectable, because you've had sewers for a hundred years, you don't have any suspects in, in the village. So, we can look at other parameters that we've been sampling for decades and decades, like nitrates, sulfates, things that are indicators of, um, surface compounds. Like if you give me a sample of water, I could probably tell you if it's from an urban area or from a farm, just by looking at the other parameters. And Hempstead has very few parameters that suggest any kind of surface impact. Um, one of the things with Roosevelt Field is, because they had air conditioning systems, so they had solids that were presumably used in the airbase. Years ago, there were a few things, we saw some components that would indicate weather gasoline, like really old gasoline, just a few little bits left. And we saw those, you know, go by and, and disappear. So, we see the pattern of how the contaminants, what contaminants are there, what contaminants, you know, how they drop over the years. The 1-4 dioxin doesn't follow the pattern that you would expect to see if somebody up in Garden City dumped a barrel of 4dioxin, just is not showing up with the right patterns. So, there's something else going on. So, I, I think it's associated with Roosevelt Field, because with their air conditioning wells, what happened was, usually plumes start shallow and you go deeper, deeper, deeper as time goes on, and they grow wider. But that one was like a giant blender. They had air conditioning wells that, that pumped the contamination, ran through the air conditioner, and then dunked it into a recharge base. So, instead of plume it ten feet thick, it's two hundred feet thick. So, that's to me, and other people will dispute, I've talked to people at DC, and they're, you know, open to the ideas, they're trying to help the village with, uh, doing some groundwater investigation through the Freon and Royal Avenue, they've been very helpful with that. And you're also looking at, uh, trying to help us with the 1-4 dioxin, however, they have their own budgetary limitations on things.
Isn't that supposed to be the 1-4 dioxin?
Not at all.
You're explaining that just that it's, um, that it's more of, just how far we're committed?
Yep. The 1-4 dioxin is actually a very big problem in almost every water system in Nassau County. The ones that don't have it yet have, are preparing for it to come, because it's, it's moving down toward them.
Isn't that like a nationwide issue?
Uh, yes, it's, it's very prevalent in many areas. They're looking at patterns, and they're trying to establish, you know, it's used in such minute amounts in so many different things, it makes it very difficult. See, one of the things that's unusual with Long Island, Nassau and Southern, is you have a groundwater source, which most of the country is on surface water, the drinking water out of a river and treating it. But, the, the other places have groundwater, but have very little population. So, we're unusual in that, we have a very high, almost urban population density, but we're still on groundwater. And we also have a very commercial, industrial background. So, a lot of the metal degreases were always assumed to have been related to production of, you know, wartime things in World War II. But I know, um, twenty-five years ago, the biggest plume on Long Island was out at Burkheadon Labs, and the source of that looks like it was a truck washing station when it was Camp Upton in World War I. So, you have an area that's out in the middle of farms and, and woods, and it ended up being the biggest plume in the land.
Was that resolved? It was that resolved, Burkheadon?
Uh, it's almost, it's almost resolved. I have an animation, if you want, I can show you the...
The plume and the lead gathering coming from Garden City, has that been resolved?
Uh, I think you're talking about the manufactured gas plume?
Yes.
Um, that one is, um, it's much shallower, so it doesn't impact us directly, because our wells are much deeper. Um, we haven't really, uh, you know, we don't follow that one day to day, we've, we've talked to DC, we're on the contact list for interested parties, but they almost never contact us about it. But so far as we understand, it's still very shallow, and it's being addressed, but it takes decades usually.
But it's still moving? It's still moving?
Yes, but the capture...
It's moving south of Hempstead, so eventually it hit Mobile Avenue well.
Well, I think, I think they actually have a remediation system on part of it. I don't, I'm not well-versed on the details of that one.
Okay. One last question, I'll shut up. How many times a day is the village testing?
Uh, well, we, we collect samples generally twice a week. I think the total number of parameters that you're testing is about eight thousand, so if you want to spread that out around three hundred and sixty-five days, that would give you your average. And we do have continuous monitors for certain things like chlorine residual, because again, bacteria is the biggest thing. Nobody even thinks about it now, because we kind of solve that problem. But we're always looking at chlorine residual, and we're also looking at pH, with continuous pH monitors, because the water comes out of the ground acid, and we add, um, caustic soda to bring the pH up, and we also add phosphates to make the water less corrosive, so we don't end up with a Flint kind of a problem. flint kind of a problem.
I have a question. This voluntary card, on, on average in our community, what percentage of the residents turn these back in?
I would have to ask, uh, Mike.
We reached out, uh, Mason Street, about two hundred people, a hundred fifty people that I've known may have lead service lines. We had twenty responded.
So out of the entire village, twenty households responded?
A hundred fifty.
A hundred and fifty households?
Now, I'm just, to the whole village, Zadines sixty people, Bon Jitas sixty households. But my target, my target is for people that be suspicious or may have known to have lead sampleized. That's my target.
So I think your question is, Shelley, you wanna know if everybody in the village get that card?
Does everybody in the village get this, and what percentage responds?
No, everybody doesn't get that card.
No. We just did a mass mailing, so.
Right. Did we, did we mail it to every residence this time?
Not yet.
They went to, so basically, it's based on the year your house was built.
Right.
He went through the whole explanation, but, um, so basically, it's based on what year your house was built.
Right.
And based on those credentials, those houses that are suspected to have been built, you know, a certain year, and are suspected to have lead piping in there.
So what's that certain year?
Those are both the ones that got it. So last year, they sent it out to a hundred and fifty homes. Twenty people only responded.
But what's the certain year? You said a certain year. But he, he also said that, he also said nineteen fifty seven, but he also said that if your pipes have been soldered with lead, then, you know, so there's no real way of knowing.
Well, he was saying nineteen fifty, and then he, and then he mentioned nineteen fifty seven.
Okay.
And then he clarified that it has to, it's all circumstantial, based on whether or not you have, because it could be nineteen fifty seven, but it could have the solder that's lead.
So my concern is, in a community like this, where everybody takes shortcuts, how many people had something soldered with, with lead? You know, and so what percentage of is what I'm asking.
So what we did last year, what we did last year, December, we sent out a mailing in the last newsletter that went out to seventeen thousand homes that had this information in there, and requesting residents, all residents, to go ahead and, and call the water plant and get a free sampling kit delivered to their house, so that they could get, you know, a free sample. The results will be mailed back to their houses. And I don't even know if we had many, we don't have, in terms of people like responding to things like this, they're very low responsory, you know?
So.
And it may not be exclusive to Hempstead, but.
So I, I, you know, this is, and this has everything to do with this water, but mostly has what to do with our community. This is why we need viable civic associations in our community, because when I leave here tonight, I'm taking the statues, and I'm knocking on everybody in my block's door so that they can understand this. But the people don't know. And it's, it's not likely gonna read the newsletter that you sent home unless somebody knocks on the door and shares the information with the people that live here. But I, I really don't want us to be in a situation like a flint. I mean, I'm here tonight because I'm concerned about the people that live in the 11550 and how this water affects everybody. And I, I just think that we have to take extra precautions, and we do have to be our brother's keepers. And if we're not, we're gonna be in a lot more trouble. But anyway, that's why I asked about the percentage of people that would have this information.
One, one point of comfort that you might get on this is that lead forms a patina. So basically, like iron turns to rust, and the iron scale rust, it doesn't really seal up, so it keeps rusting forever. But like, you look at the Statue of Liberty, it's copper, it turns green, and green is patina. You open up a lead pipe, it's gonna turn yellow, so it, the studies that I've seen show that it takes about seven years for the lead to form over that patina. So if there was something that was done even with lead solder, more than seven years ago, it probably formed a patina. One of the problems that caught flint unawares is they had the same thing. They had these lead service lines, and presumably lead solder as well, and it was in there for many decades, and it was very stable. They changed the water, the water chemistry was, you know, it was different. So it stripped, it was more aggressive, it stripped that patina off, and it exposed all this lead, almost like this new pipe. So there is a balancing factor in there.
I can add something to that, that if I have my target date or my target sixty samples, I can go to a broader area, say, if I look at homes that were built nineteen sixty and below, then I'll have, you know, I just gotta do more research, I go to the building department, find out how I can find out what homes were built by what time period, and then target those, and, and bigger, broader area, yes, that I can do.
But access to everyone's address and phone numbers of your billing, right? People, please, with your water here, is that right?
Yes.
So you have access to everyone's contact information. Why not do a robo-call for them and telling them that it's critical that they do their testing before anything else? I mean, they get robo-calls, most reasons, why not something for this?
So one of the things we're trying to do is we're trying to focus on what EPA calls tier-one site. So we're required to try and find those lead service lines. And then the tier-two, the other materials, mostly copper, that have the lead solder.
I understand that the one that contacts the homeowners using those billing rules, using that data that you have already for your billing system, why not request all the phone numbers?
Oh, that, that's something that we can look into, man? We can look into that?
They'll respond to a call or a text, but they're not, because it's an emergency situation as far as the.
Some of them, yeah, okay.
But you send a mail, and everyone throws a mail out, and it's a jump now. Something like this, I would think you would put a priority on, wouldn't you?
Absolutely. There is a priority on everybody's safety area of the village, particularly when it comes to, to our water. And the one thing I would say, and I don't want anyone to walk out there thinking that our water is not safe, okay?
But just something, I don't know, one act, many churches. About Hempstead, in Massacree, Hempstead Village, what about Uniondale, Roosevelt, and all those other areas?
We're gonna do that, bro.
Could you have a, a?
He said, what about Roosevelt?
Uniondale, same. Yeah, that's. We were talking about Hempstead, what about Uniondale, Roosevelt, more than all those other areas?
They have their own water plants. We, we're only doing Hempstead. Yeah, they have their own, every, they have their own.
I think they're under the town, because they're town.
Right, right.
Well, that's mean Hempstead is a core of the village, and Uniondale is not.
That's correct. They're under the town of Hempstead.
So.
So you would have to go to the town of Hempstead to find out?
That our waters, about our waters.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Another question? So my question is, if fifty-five thousand or say, maybe, maybe, say twenty-five thousand homes send their card in, are we prepared to test every single one of those?
That could be why it has to be done.
That's why we got a target of all sixty.
So we, we're prepared to do that? I mean, if we, if that's a hundred percent, why?
Listen, if, if we got, I mean, I think we both wanna say the same thing. Your question was, if we have fifty, got twenty-five thousand, right? If we have to test them, we have to test them.
Well, you know, we, if you have to test them, you have to test them, but are you prepared to test them? Are you, can you test that many right now?
Right, 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 right.
Not, not even your capacity with your team and who you, who work along with you, are you, would you be able to test that many?
There's, the actual number is about eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty, that's the actual whole, yeah. Just for service lines for the house.
Okay.
It's not, it's not the number of fifty-five thousand.
Okay, so it's just, it's about eight thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that's all.
Over the period of time, we can, within a month's time.
Okay, so eight thousand is our target.
It's just that, sixty.
Right, right. One more question? Uh, routine, and then you're gonna call it a night?
Um, basically, it's not a question, it's just a statement. I think that people get it confused. If you do, for instance, if you do Mason Street, and you do five houses on Mason Street, that you don't need a water sample from every house on Mason Street, because we're on the same water mine.
Right.
So I think I tell about twenty-five thousand people, it's gonna be from different areas anyway.
I don't, I think you're talking about twenty-five thousand homes with two thousand?
Yeah, homes, yeah.
Right.
But, it's not gonna happen. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the lead, we're talking about lead and the pipes are being repaired. People have weeks in their homes that freeze over, have a plumber come in and bring lead solder and solder those pipes. That's what we're talking about. That's what I believe this is about. Not about how many lines went to your districts.
Right.
We're talking about houses that have lead inside their homes. And maybe the question should say, if you have repairs recently in your home, are you likely to test your water?
Good morning. Thank you. And, uh, last question?
I think this president talks something.
About water?
Yes.
Okay.
Is, um, is that why I wonder if Terrace Avenue, Terrace Avenue has so much problem with the water, because you're always over here?
What?
I'm sorry.
I say, is, um, is, do one of the Terrace Avenue, if the Terrace Avenue really has so much problem with the water, because you're always over here? Who, what are the problems?
You're talking about the.
Oh, the fire?
Yeah, we're here every week for.
Oh, they're, talking about the backup?
Right, water's brown, out, the fire.
Oh, the, okay, yeah. So, so with the apartment buildings, it has what they call stand pipes. And so instead of hooking up to a hydrant, we hook up to the stand pipe in, in the building. And, and if you, if you do have a fire in Terrace Avenue, because the stand pipe is for the entire building, yes, it's gonna affect your, your water after the fire, yes.
No, I'm saying, you say you flush out the, um, the hydrants.
The hydrants, but not stand, not stand.
You're always over here.
Yeah. I urge you all to take, um, those cards over there and take the number off that. We will print up some more and make certain that we get out as soon as we can.
If you don't see, they create, they had water seepers holes that flush less water. Maybe we should think about replacing water tanks and people may have homes, because that concerns a lot of water in the.
Thank you, goodnight, everybody, stay home.